All right, it is 7:10, 7:12 on Monday, March 7th, and I would like to call the regular, in the March regular meeting, the Norbert Planning Commission to order. I'd like to note that Commissioners Boyes, Crumb, Spear, and Jeske Hyun are here in person, and Bressi are here in person, and Commissioners Brower. Is Jim Cornwell here?
Not yet.
Okay, Commissioner Brower is online, and Commissioner Cornwell has not yet joined us. We are joined by the project engineer, Eric Johnson, Byron McCulloch, and four people representing the applicants for 7:14, 7:15, or 14? Chint is wrong. 7:14 Montgomery Avenue. So, begin with an update and a review of the agenda for tonight. The update is that the Planning Commission was front and center at the Borough Council meeting last week. We discussed the infill ordinance for about 45 minutes. I hope you all tuned in, it was seething. And council at the end recommended some changes to that ordinance before agreeing to advertise it, so they will formally vote to advertise it this month, we hope. So we can report more on that later in the meeting. The ordinance for accessory dwelling units has been advertised, and so we will discuss that a little later tonight and make our formal recommendation to council about that ordinance now that it has been advertised. There's a brief discussion of a process for collecting citizen input and generating a vision for Town Square/Station Circle, which the council invited us to lead that process. So Jim and Dave will report on that a little later this evening. And I believe that is the highlights of the council meeting and what has happened since we last met. Jim, last month or two, we designated you as the liaison to the Penn Valley Civic for Montgomery Avenue. Do you have anything to report in regard to that? All right. So then I'd like to move on to item B, which is a review of the January/Febuary minutes, which Adam drafted and amended January minutes based on the conversation we had. And so I'd like to know if anyone would like to make a motion to adopt the minutes for January. Let's start with January. As revised, based on our meeting last month.
I'm moving to adopt the January minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Not at all.
Did you just accurately capture the comments that you made?
I believe they did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Are you all in favor of approving the January minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Dave? There you go. All right. Any opposed? Okay, so I will have those minutes posted to the, through the Planning Commission's website.
Sure.
And then in terms of the February minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our February meeting?
I'll move.
Are they moved? And is there a second? We have no second to approve the minutes.
I have a second.
Adam's second. Out of self-interest. Okay. Any discussion about the minutes from the February minute? Any comments, corrections, questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from our February meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, submitted by Adam. Adam, thank you very much for taking on this task. It's a great help. Okay, so we will move to the next item of business. Tonight we have one land development subdivision application, the tenant sketch plan review for 714 Montgomery Avenue. After that, we'll move on to our old business, Station Circle infill zoning amendment. I didn't put on here, so actually I neglected to put the ABU amendment on. Oh, I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to include a discussion and recommendation about the ABU ordinance. Can I have someone second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we can add this under new business. In, Paul, in favor of adding that?
No.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will add that under new business. And then if we have time, we'll talk about the south, or at least get close guidance on how that's going to look. As usual, we will take public comment on each agenda item, so if there are folks in the audience who would like to comment on the land development or any of the zoning amendments, we'll take comments as we're discussing them and then public comment at the end. All right, so I would like to welcome the team here who's come here tonight to discuss the tenant sketch plan for 714 Montgomery Avenue. Michelle, I think we're going to have to ask you to coordinate with them, and so I'll just ask, would you guys just like to give Michelle the signal about when to load it, when to advance it? Okay, Michelle, so they'll kind of tell you, would you like us to load that up now, that presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can you load that presentation up? I hope she's there.
There you go.
Okay, there it is. Okay, thank you. Well, folks, the floor over to you, Dan. We appreciate you coming tonight, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Great. So first of all, thanks to everyone for having us here tonight. We're here for 714 Montgomery Avenue, Price House, joined by George Brosman from Catlin Silver, Kathy Dokken from Baron Horse Architects, and Rob Lambert from Site and Engineering. Between us, we'll be able to answer all of your questions. So first of all, the property is 714 Montgomery Avenue. It's located next to Bob's Service Station and Car Crazy on Montgomery Avenue, and it all has Meeting House Lane, as you can see in the site, in the aerial view. On Meeting House, again, it's Bob's next to it, and it's across the street from the writing apartment lot.
Michelle, can you put the aerial up?
Yeah.
It was separate. She's there.
There you go. So, there you go. So that's the look. I guess Michelle, we can go to the existing conditions plan?
Or the street view.
Oh, I'm sorry, the photo is the street view. So the top picture is the existing front of the property. That was the Price House, it was owned by Lincoln Hospital up until recently, when we purchased the property, and it's used as the hamper shop, consignment store, I think since around 1950 or so. As you can see in the back, that's the apartment part from Meeting House, and the photo on the left on the bottom is the old shed that they used for furniture storage, and that is to be demolished. And then you can see in the running photo, that's the existing driveway off of Meeting House Lane, that's to be reused, and you can see the back of the Price House. The portion on the, that's good and to be demolished, is just that the garage and the one-story section on the left side of the rear of the property in the photo. All right, we can go to the existing conditions plan.
Michelle, it's sheet two of the, there you go.
So there you can see existing conditions, that shows the shed to be demolished on the left side, and you can see the original structure, which is the main rectangle of the existing portion, and the odd shape is the garage and the one-story addition to be demolished. And we can go to the proposed plan. So here's our proposed plan, showing an addition to the existing building. The existing building be retained as office use, and the addition will contain 10 residential condominium units, those will be for sale.
Could I interrupt a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I neglected to mention, I actually have hard copies of this.
Yeah, that's okay. That's easier.
So flustered by the overnight stuff.
Sure. We'll get going.
You can have it.
I'm sure it's fair.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
All right, so, yeah, so, I guess everyone has it up now. So as you can see in the proposed plan, we're going to be using the two existing driveways, one off of Montgomery, one off of Meeting House. The one off Montgomery is one-way traffic and the two-way. It'll be an entrance to the building on the back on Meeting House, in addition to the existing on the front of the building. Cars will come in, and we have parking spots underneath, on the first floor of the building, underneath the second and third floors.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
I'm sorry, the parking is on the, in the envelope of the building on the first floor. So you pull in to the garage on the first floor there, and then the residential use will be on the second and third floor. So again, on the second, third floor will be five residential units on each, and those will be for sale. So we submitted our plan in January. We have received initial round of review letters from the township engineer, the zoning officer, as well as Montgomery County, and we had then responded to those letters and comments in February with revisions. We have heard back from everyone with provided responses, and I'm actually going to turn it over to George to go through those review letters and give you our thoughts on each item.
Thank you, Mike. As Mike said, I'm George Brosman, I'm a land use attorney, do a lot of work in the local area here, and I've read the review letters. We did receive Kevin's a little early today, so we might, in the normal course, we might have liked to speak to Kevin about it, but time didn't permit that. I will note that with Kevin's letter, I can boil into, there's two kind of technical requirements that have come up, and they're in the letter, repeated in a lot of different ways, and they showed up a little bit in Eric's letter, too. And we also want to acknowledge, we have a second review letter from the county. Before I go into the technical details, as Mike indicated, this is a unique site, it has this old building, as you saw in the photo, and maybe Michelle, if you wouldn't mind going back to the photo for, when you drive down Montgomery Avenue, this property, on its own lot at least, kind of has maintained its appearance. Of course, I don't know what it looked like back in the 1800s or whenever it was built, but it's the front of the building in a nice open, juxtaposed just to the left, you can see, you know, the overall setting has been compromised off of the property, there's a gas station there. So with this unique condition, Mike Friedman and the applicant really took at the property and said, and the zoning ordinance, and, you know, one of the top goals was to preserve this building and its setting. So working with that and the ordinance, you know, he came upon the idea to create a mixed-use building, which was consistent with the zoning, and thought it would be best to tuck that behind this front facade, and by doing that, you know, this kind of setting can be maintained. We do acknowledge there are two parking spots proposed, we got some comments about those, and Mike can tell you why they're important, but we thought that this was a really good way to plan, and we thought that we were able to comply with the zoning ordinance by tucking, by creating a mixed-use building, and by tucking it in the back, and taking a surface parking lot in the back, that you can see in the pictures here, that we don't think is very attractive, and creating a nice streetscape along Meeting House Lane as well. But for the two parking spaces I mentioned, the plan that Mike was able to develop, you know, all of the parking is contained within the building, so it's screened from view, and there's a nice streetscape presence created along Meeting House Lane. So looking at, I'll start with Kevin's letter first, and I won't go through every one unless you would like me to, but the two issues I see that are the biggest, really relate to two issues. The first one comes up in item three, what is this building? And does it meet the requirements for a mixed-use building? And then from four through eight, or four through seven, really, four through seven really deal with the treatment of the area in front of the building. Is it a front yard? What is the required front yard? Can the parking spaces be there? So all of those comments in four through seven really relate to that. So going back to comment three, what is this building? We're proposing it as an addition, so we're proposing it as one principal building. We believe it meets the definition of a mixed-use building. The ordinance doesn't contain a lot of detail about what a mixed-use building is, it has language that it's a building intended for vertical mixing of uses, and then there might be another definition that's very similar. It doesn't address how that vertical mix of uses is to be established, and it doesn't prohibit horizontal mixing of uses. That's all it really says. So the architecture for the building isn't that far along, but if, maybe you could go, please, Michelle, back to the site plan. If you can picture then this as one building with one ground floor, so in the Price House, that'll be ground floor commercial office use, and then as you proceed through the connecting corridor, you'll go into the other part, part of the first floor. There'll be a mix there of parking, which is screened from view, a gymnasium space, and a lobby space. So the first floor has that mix of uses. The second and third floor of the rear part of the building will have the residential uses. Of course, the upper floors of the Price House will have commercial. So we believe that does meet a vertical mixing of uses, and there's no other standards on that. So we believe it's one, one principal building, one mixed-use building, and we comply no other requirements in the ordinance that we had to meet. Now Kevin's letter says that concern he raised was that the lobby and the parking and the gym, you know, should not count as a, as a different use, but since this is all one building, it's our position that it's the lobby, the gym, the parking, and the commercial use of the Price House. That is the first floor of the one principal building. So, and we have the mixing of uses. There was a comment that you can't have residential use on the, on the first floor. We don't have residential use on the first floor. All of the condominium units will be on the second and third floor of the rear part of the building. Of course, with any mixed-use building where you have residential above, you would need some sort of lobby and ancillary facilities to reach those units from the ground floor. So we don't believe that's prohibited. And we do think, as I said in the beginning, it's a good way to redevelop the property by preserving the Price House, by putting this in the back, treating it as one mixed-use If you look at table four of the zoning ordinance, it has all of the area and bulk requirements, impervious coverage, building coverage, there's other provisions about height. This plan complies with all of, all of those requirements. We have the required parking, we meet all of those. So the question that's come up, moving beyond the use, is how do you treat the area? That picture I showed, that we were trying to preserve, how do you treat the area between the front of the Price House and Montgomery Avenue under the zoning ordinance? And all of the comments in Kevin's letter, four to seven, I think relate to the difference between, I'm going to call it the actual setback, which as you can see is where the building is at, out to Montgomery Avenue, and the required setback. And I think those should be kept separate. When you look at some of the comments in the review letter and the requirements of the ordinance, for instance, there's been a number of comments, can you have those two parking spaces in the front of the building? You cannot have them there if that's in the first lot layer. And then how do you figure out what the first lot layer is? When you go to table four of the zoning ordinance, it says that the first lot layer is equivalent to the front yard setback, and there's a listing of what the minimum and maximum front yard setbacks are. Three feet, six inches is the minimum, nine feet, six inches is the maximum in the Montgomery Avenue 5B district. So, and then there's other provisions dealing with parking in the 5B district, and the ordinance says that parking should be set back, and I'm looking for the exact provision, it's 601B.
5B.
B5, specific to the 5B district, first says A, parking in the second or third layer, B, off-street parking spaces in driveways, except for driveways that cross property lines, shall be set back no less than 12 feet from the primary frontage line and landscape. So this is saying, and there's another requirement, a couple other requirements about parking that we'll get to, but as I read this, what this is saying is your parking should be 12 feet back from the primary frontage line. There's a definition of primary frontage line and a definition section of the ordinance, It says, "primary," a line parallel tangent to the street that the front facade faces. So the front facade of the Price House is facing Montgomery Avenue, so it's a lot like the street that the front facade faces. Doesn't say it's measured from the front facade, it says, it's telling you what line to look at. And then it says, "located at a distance equal to the required front yard setback," or required front setback. So that, that's where I was saying, there's a difference between the actual existing setback and required setback. So this rule is saying, the primary frontage line is at a distance equal to the required front yard setback. The required front setback is at, table four for the 5B district, it's the three feet, six inches and the nine feet, six inch max that I referred to. Going back to the position 6015, that would be, and section C isn't really an issue, D isn't really an issue, just saying your driveway could also, then E, parking spaces at grade underneath the building shall be set back at least 40 feet from the primary frontage line and screened from view adjacent streets. The spaces in Kevin's letter, in addition to raising a question about the two spaces in the front, would it be okay if I pointed you, sorry Ted, in addition to the spaces in the front, he was saying that, as I read it, he's applying the required setbacks to be the same as the existing setback, and then if you take that, and you measure 40 feet back, you can't have parking. So not only is he saying these parking spaces are a problem, but the spaces we tucked in the back behind the Price House are a problem. But I read this provision to say that parking spaces at grade underneath the building shall be set back at least 40 feet from the primary frontage line. Then going back to that provision that I just read, the primary frontage line again is the line, and it's measured at the required setback, not at the actual or existing setback. So we believe that the primary frontage line is, as we've shown it on this plan, we have the 12 feet drawn, it's measured off the right away, and it shows that the parking is out of it, and the first parking spot, it's under the building and screened from view, but it's over 70 feet away from there. Interpreting the ordinance in this way, we believe is fair and makes sense, and allows this project to have an otherwise, you'd be saying you're penalized for not adding on to the front of the Price House, because if you don't, if you don't add on and build out in the front to build up to your setback, which could have been three feet, six inches, you're going to be penalized, and we're going to count the primary frontage line as measuring, not from where you, but that big nice setback you had is going to cause problems for you. That doesn't seem to be logical in this case. So we were hoping that we could work with Kevin, Eric, and the borough to see if we can work that issue out, you know, agree with that plan. With the rest of Kevin's comments, he did say, number one, that certificate of appropriate this should be required. We wanted to speak to the borough about that, if that is really required. We feel that the building is not being demolished, and we think we can show that the part that is being demolished is not really the significant part of the building. But if that was required, you know, we would, we'd do what is required. Number two, I think was a technical matter, that we comply with, or eight, it's just information to be provided at preliminary plan and at final, and we'd be happy to do that. Eric's, I think we're all, will comply, except the issues, he raised some similar issues that Kevin did, so if we resolve issues, that's factually, I think we would address the issues that he raised on those points. Rob, the gap in boundaries comment, and number eight, and our review letter, I guess they, you know, they didn't like the spots in the front. Mike can tell you how they're important, and the county offered some solutions, they suggested that those spots be relocated, and also suggested that the parking requirement might be able to be reduced by using shared parking. I think, you know, we think those spots are good, and we think they can be landscaped in a way that will not detract from the Price House, but I think Mike is willing to look at that, if that was the only issue, like, could they be relocated? I don't know, Mike, if you had a comment, I'm glad you wanted them.
Yeah, I think the reason why we feel that the spots do make sense up there are, one, the office special use in the front portion of the building, it's, if you do, if it's a special, sign, Montgomery, when, already used. And in addition, because they'll be used mostly for that use there, and in addition to that, we would follow the landscape requirement. And in addition to that, we would follow the landscape requirement. That's our line, why we want the spots there. Again, we do think it complies, because we think it's in the second lot layer.
Yes, all these, and we're happy to answer questions or field comments.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Just to record, the public here who's watching, having the opportunity to offer his interpretation of the code and any kind of comments he had on your opinion. So, Kevin, would you spend a moment reviewing your comments and reactions to the arguments that were made?
Could we just, we're going to have a discussion.
Sure. Hey, please stay with me. That's what I told. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
All right. So, I apologize. Like I said in the chat, we're up over in Jersey, and the storms are pretty windy. So, between all the Wi-Fi issues, my audio is pretty choppy here. So, bear with me, and just let me know if you can't hear everything I'm saying. As I stated prior, most of my comments, specifically 4, are in regards to where the setback is taken on the property. Just to go back to the original iteration of the plan, I think that there's setbacks that provided the original January submission accurate in an agreement with what the Burrow requires. And what that requires is the front setback for existing building to be placed at the facade, primarily due to mission. So, we have frontage line, which I believe was already stated, but that's a line parallel or tangent to a street, located at a distance equal to the required setback. And then the front setback is the area of lot measured from a lot line, I'm sorry, from a lot line to a facade or elevation that is clear of permanent structure, not to include portions of the structure authorized as encroachments. For the front setback, cannot be an existing and a required. There can't be two for one lot. An existing building, there's simply the existing setback, which for this property would be the front facade of the Price property facing Montgomery Avenue. So, in other words, the original iteration, which showed the front setback was from the curb line to the, I believe that was accurate. And I believe the measurement was 43 feet. And therefore, that's a lot of the other requirements and comments that I had. Whether or not that's a disagreement in my interpretation, I feel strongly that my interpretation is right. Moreover, I believe that the Table 4 required setbacks are for planning new developments. So, this will be a blank slate and a completely vacant lot. Yes, I would agree that if that was the case, you get to choose your setback anywhere from 3 feet 6 inches to 9 feet 6 inches. However, we do have the existing building, and therefore, the front setback should be taken too. That's kind of the basis for comments 3 through 7. The parking comments, both in the first lot layer and in the garage. So, I'm happy to work through those. But I feel strongly that the interpretation is pretty clear in the code through not only the tables, but the definitions. I think 3, I think the mixed-use building, as you stated, I have two sections. That's all we have to go off of, stating that they do have to be, or intended to be vertically. And just looking at the property, I don't see that vertical mixture of, the example where you broke down by looking kind of as the whole first floor, as if you sliced the building into three pieces. I just don't see that. I think that if there was no gallery or corridor, and I understand it is there, gallery slash corridor, it really has no use. It's really kind of a vacant use. It's commercial, it's not residential. We would call that back building an apartment building. There's no other use other than residential. There's no commercial space, there's no retail space, there's no light industry space. I feel like all that back building, just an apartment building other than that connection. So, I tried to explain that as best I could. Only that we have to have vertical mixes of use. I don't necessarily agree with what you presented, but I don't see any other way to not require vertical mixing uses.
Okay. Hey, Kevin, sometimes your audio really is choppy. So, and I know sometimes if you stop sharing your video, the audio improves. So, maybe, could I ask if you could try that, turn off your camera?
Is that helping at all?
Maybe. Let's see.
What I'd like to do today, I think it's important to hear your responses to the zoning officer's letter and hear the zoning officer explain his interpretation, particularly for members of the public who don't have the benefit of reading the letters. But I don't think this is the right forum tonight to kind of debate the interpretations of the code. So, I hope we can avoid that. And I think what we want to talk about more is appropriateness from our understanding of what we are trying to achieve in our, through our code of some of these issues, the parking in front of the building, without actually getting specifics of the law in the code. But I do want to ask a question to clarify something, which follows up on what Kevin said, which is whether or not, whatever interpretation of vertical or horizontal uses, the code is pretty clear that residential is not allowed on the ground floor of a mixed-use building, three meters. So, affirmatively, tell me what the use is. Portion of the building, this is in our zoning code. You are proposing for the first floor.
I'll have to open up the code.
Okay.
I will, in a minute.
If you'd like.
But I would say, are you just citing that part of the first floor, your Price House?
It's residential on the first floor of the mixed-use building in the 5B district. So, the Price House does, you're not proposing any kind of residential.
I want to clarify, it's one building. So, the first floor includes from the front facade of the existing Price House to the rear facade of the proposed addition. That's, I just want to, I don't want to separate the two. So, we can't separate the two. So, the use on the first floor is a mix of office, parking, and accessory uses, which will be accessible to both residential and office.
So, you do not allow, there's one building or two. We would not allow residential on the ground floor.
That's not residential.
But if it's accessory to residential, it's residential. What is affirmatively, the land use you're proposing?
How would you, a mixed-use building, that you're, be? There's a net.
Question. Can you tell me what the land use is on the ground floor of the rear portion of the building? It's not a theory, it's a question.
Well, first of all, we don't, for argument's sake, separate. We have a mix of commercial and residential parking. That parking that's in that building, for the, for the commercial use of the building, and that is on the ground floor, there's a gymnasium, and there's a lobby. Those are permitted accessory uses. And the parking is accessory. Parking is accessory to the, to the building, provides the commercial and the residential. And it's to be determined what the gymnasium, that could be available for the use of the tenants in the, on the remainder of the first floor, the commercial tenants. So, and residential, it's not defined in the ordinance. Residential, we say, is clearly the residential condominium units. And if this was one mixed-use building, say, on a different property, and how we've decided, and there was a, a pop on the ground floor, and a gymnasium, and then a level above, there would be some access, as well as a building. You have to have the ancillary on the ground floor to get to the upper residential, in any building. It would be impossible to need the building code to get to it.
The question is, is it an accessory use?
So, residential accessory use is appropriate in or certain, in any, most people. Do you?
Just asking something. We're not here to debate the codes, it's not.
Asking code.
No, you just, I've chosen for that ground floor. I thought, and what you're...
No. You're ignoring the remainder of the ground floor.
I'm just talking about that portion of the building. Rest of that.
You, some of the ground floor is all just accessory. You want to move portions of the ground?
I think that's pretty clear that, simple question. Answer is, it's an accessory use to commercial, it's an accessory use to residential.
It's not what I heard.
What did you hear?
It's office and all accessory. The Price House.
No, I just asked, for the back portion of the building, what is the ground floor is? But the front portion, it's clear what the front portion is. The simple question is, what is the land use on the back portion of the building? Oh, that's the question. So, I think the answer is, well, there are certain uses in the front portion of the building. The back portion of the building is accessory uses. Okay. So, that will be for the zoning officer to consider. So, the real question I'd like to ask the planning permission, and in addition, any questions you have, is despite whatever the interpretations on the code is, the proposal is being great. What is your feeling about the appropriateness of the project, that's what we're trying to achieve, and that's our interest? Do you have any other particular questions? I'm just going around. So, Heidi, would you like to?
I'd kind of like to hear what other people are saying. First, it's like, you know, it's something, you're, that's more, yes.
And just in general, the appropriateness, development of the features within that, what we're trying to achieve, that's our concern.
I get pretty easily more, it's not that concept. I don't see how the parking inside is ever going to be appropriate. But, not that much.
Is there anything more you'd like to say about what you think needs to be worked?
I'm with Heidi, I'd like to hear what other people say.
Jim?
I can't hear. I think it's pretty clear that, well, in terms of the setback, I think it's pretty clear that the first lot layer ends at the existing building. Any other interpretation should make sense. In terms of the use, I understand that this is meant to be one building. It's an interesting interpretation, use. I don't think we've had a horizontal mix of use ever come in front of us before. I'm not sure of the step line. However, it's not inappropriate to make that back building entirely residential and accessory to residential. It makes, we have a building that's a place of bricklands, does have parking, it's accessory to the residential use within the footprint of the building. You know, you could consider it similar to that. I don't think it's all that wild a theory, frankly.
Yeah, I want to try to steer away from our feelings about what the code sets. I would sort of, just like, find your reactions. It's pretty simple. There was a discussion about the parking, it's been very important to the function of the first property's development. Is that an issue that you think, is that, it's just a general appropriate thing for us to have?
Parking, parking at the front. To me, that's indisputed, undisputable, that that's the first lot layer. And we don't allow that at all. That's not even available in these own areas. I don't see how that's going to work. But the use in the back, I don't, I don't see why, I'm not sure for why it would be to our advantage to insist that there be commercial activity out of the house as opposed to the rest of the building. So, I'm so prepared to accept that interpretation more than I am.
Yeah, I want to get away from interpretation. It's like, because that's going to be, that's adjudicated also. Just, I think it's important to state what we think we're trying to accomplish.
Well, okay. And they're not this kind of... It's definitely, it's a commercial lot, but it does, most people are the residential area. I think we just ought to consider that the back portion is, by nature, probably going to be more residential than commercial. That's probably the way we want.
Jen, are you ready for your questions?
I mean, just the first thing that came to mind when I saw the plan. And again, it's really, I find it difficult to fully understand the architecture without seeing elevation, or section, or some boats, even landscape. But this corridor connecting piece is interesting. And I guess my problem is there's a lot of car escape. And you have this historic element, and you have this gallery corridor, and then you have a lot of parking and a lot of car escape and driving. And it feels sort of compact. I think I would like to see something with a little bit more green incorporated into its overall configuration of the lot, so that this gallery corridor has a more, a sense of actually being in a site. It does have a historic piece to it. I think that would give it scale, it would encourage more pedestrian flow. It would seem less like, less like a big mass. You know, I think we are really, we want to encourage green space, and architecture is a great way to get into green space and vice versa. So, maybe more, you know, thinking more about how to configure green space for business.
Dave, you're on the line, Dave Brower. I don't see, I don't see you, Dave. If you are tuned in, if you're like, I'm just sort of asking your reactions to the proposal itself, not so much the parsing or the zoning.
Well, my biggest problem, and I don't know if you can hear me, because on my end, the audio quality is atrocious. And I'm getting about 10% of the discussion. So, I, you know, from what I can gather, and I haven't had time to study this independently since we only saw this this afternoon, I, at least at this first take on it, I agree with Kevin's interpretation about the parking in the front yard. And I, I think, besides all of the definitions that he covered, or as much as I could surmise, putting parking in the front yard would also be completely contrary to the historic district ordinance intents, if not the exact language, which I've not had a chance to look at. In terms of the rest of the submission, like I said, I had a very hard time following the discussion about the mixed use, and I haven't had time to study it. What I would say is, just looking at a submission on the basis of the site plan for a project like this, really is insufficient. This, what I, what I surmise to be a three-story building will completely dominate the Price building from Montgomery Avenue. I don't know what the height is, but I would imagine that the height of the new building will be just about as high as the existing building, if not the same height. So, I think this submission has to be seen also in three dimensions, as well as two dimensions. So, I think that's about all that I'm prepared to talk about at this point, given my understanding of it. But there's obviously a lot more to look at.
Do you have your...
I'd like to just ask a question. So, the structure, the one-story structure is at the back... Um, so the, the structure is, the one-story structure is of the back of the building. You know, with, when they date from?
I do have some info on it, but I don't have it. I can get that to you, but I don't have it. Have any idea?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can tell you. That there was an addition on the rear of the building in the area where the additions, um, are now. I think it had a, I think it had a shed or, uh, from the, there's some postcards that date to early nineteen, early twentieth century, uh. I think that that addition has either been enveloped by the other, there are three pieces. That addition. I'm suspicious that the, the original addition is probably somewhere in there. Uh, so I'll, I can save my comments here later, but, uh.
No, please.
It's, uh, I, I do believe that part of that addition, um, is, is likely to be late nineteen, um, early twentieth century, if, if not.
So, I mean, would it in fact then be considered? It would be up for review whether you could demolish those under our district ordinance.
As it just stayed over in the back of the structure.
It's visible from a public right away, that's all, you know.
I just put up the, an aerial view of the site.
Oh, when is that from?
This is from Mara. Two days ago.
Oh, no, okay.
A year and two days ago.
Well, okay, okay.
One year ago, it's from one year ago. So it's showing, I guess this is what Kathy was saying, that there's maybe an older addition that's part of this and then additional additions that were added.
And that's a garage to the left and then the two parts. It may have been an earlier part.
Yeah.
They appear to be wide. They appear, they appear to be wide, I don't know, just to make the record, but they appear to be wide. It's open inside, there's no interior wall in there.
From, from early postcards and images that I've seen, it appears that the far right component of that is in, is in the same spot as, as this earlier addition. Um, because it is, uh, the wall of, of, of the main building. Um, extends, um, extends into that addition area that I, I tried to search.
So, uh, so my second part of that question is, um, until you said you were making this one building, I was wondering why there was that gallery, gallery link. I thought that was a very odd thing to have. Architecturally, it's very strange. Um, if it's surely because in order to build the residential portion and to have it be mixed use, that needs to be considered one building and therefore that link makes it, to me, that's like a real hole in, in maybe your analysis or our writing of the code. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, well, why didn't you just subdivide the property and keep the price of the house whole? And build your apartment house in the back, in the ugly parking lot, which it is, and, and make a building which makes more sense, basically. I mean, as Jennifer pointed out, I mean, we have no idea what it looks like, it's a blob, basically. Um, and that. So, so I'm having a hard time reading the drawing as anything that's I can kind of feel happy about, just because right now it's not designed as like a pleasing structure. I mean, it is jammed up against meeting council lane. Um, the mixed use portion of it, which you kind of feel like should address the street somehow, is actually just the backside. It's not a street frontage. I, I see an attempt to carve out the front so that it has the indents which are required by the code, so it's not just a massive wall, but that's going to be a three-story high wall there. I, I don't, I don't feel cozy, comfortable with the way it's presented right now. I feel like it needs to be thought about as a real building and maybe. I, I don't know what our opportunity is, because this is just a schematic plan without many, any detail, but what opportunities are there to consider this? Two primary buildings on the site? Is there any kind of special exception?
I wanted, I wanted to ask that, actually. Adam, do you mind if I jump in? Because I'm going to do next. So would you offer two other options for a site like this? One is the subdivision to two lots. The other is, we have in this portion of the grounds, Heidi was suggesting, a provision where you can create two primary buildings on a lot. Not without having a subdivision. So I'm wondering if you evaluate either, which would allow, which would potentially avoid the need for that connector in the long run. So I'm wondering if you evaluate either of those. Uh, and that's why we put that in the code, provide a little more flexibility in these kind of crazy situations. So I'm wondering if you evaluate either of those paths, either the subdivision or the multiple, uh, primary buildings on a lot. Uh, we had thought about it briefly. Um, even if we did go that route, uh, we would still want to demolish the garage and one story, uh, addition on the back of the existing building. Even if we did go that route, all that would really eliminate would be that connector. Um, that doesn't require conditional use under the code. So we, we, if, we're going to end up in a similar place.
Why, why do you want to demolish this?
Uh, we need, we need the space.
A space for driveway?
Need it for building driveway for how we want to, you know, how we envision the driveway.
I mean, they don't take up much room. Do you have more that you've already done that we're not seeing?
No, we don't. There's multiple buildings, it would have the impact to, uh, essentially creating the same site plan without the connector.
They have to have a commercial ground floor of that.
I didn't say anything, I'm just asking.
So if you, if you, I'm asking, you had two buildings on the site, I was curious, does the second building have to have a commercial ground floor?
It has to have it. Something other than residential.
They were using the same arguments they're using now, that's why.
I, I mean, I don't remember, I don't agree with that, because the argument they're making is, you know, that this, a middle corridor connection makes it one structure, blah, blah, blah. So maybe two structures, uh, and you can, you know, drop that. Uh, then the second structure, uh, could not be residential on the ground floor, I guess. Under, because it's still be, you know, to be this open, so. Could not be residential, I guess, is the one way to phrase it as opposed to, does it have to be something that's, does it have to have a use other than parking?
Um, I'm not. I, I want to hear my personal interpretations, but my personal interpretations really count. I'm not changing. I, I don't believe, um, that our code means that you can have, uh, an accessory use or parking or, you know, assigned to perhaps a lobby. But, but, uh, I, I don't, in, in fact, well, anyway, I don't, I don't think the code allows that. I think it has to have a use, which is, uh, listed in our list of uses.
So if we had a second, if we had a second.
Pick them and mix them.
If you had, if you had a second building, that building itself would have to be mixed use. It has, you know, and by mixed use, we mean it has to have a use other than residential in a structure on the ground.
Well, wait.
That's what I think, that's why there are.
Well, wait.
There is the same.
Oh, two principal buildings, because it was still five and it can't be just an apartment building?
I know.
No. Apartment building.
I'm happy to offer my opinion on that, if you guys are interested.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they were separated, yeah, like currently situated what I mentioned in my letter. Um, but I know they're, they're not separated. Um, but I would recognize that back building as an apartment building. They're simply residential use. Parking is not a use in our code anyway, and therefore it requires something other than parking slash accessory residential uses to be considered, um, mixed use. And of, of course, I think the applicant's aware, it's, an apartment building is not permitted by right as a use. So it'd have to be mixed use, therefore they'd have to plug, um, either retail or light industry or just some other use designated to that first floor.
Well, I didn't bring this up as a debate, I brought it up because the question is, are, are there ways to develop the site without creating that?
Yeah, I, I don't think we're debating put it off. I think what I heard clearly was zoning officer's interpretation as the, it's an apartment. Right, so it's not a debate, right, that's just a finding of.
Well, I think, I think applicants are saying something different.
Well, they, they're saying as considered as one building, they want to consider the ground floor of the price house as the core ground floor. And it has a non-residential use of the structure. So that's the argument they're.
Sorry, I don't want to get into that.
Can I hear? I want to get a meeting.
Right. So I also heard the phrase that you asked, that the ground floor accessory use list is accessory to the retail, so that counts as being non-residential. Parking is accessory to the, to the, to the commercial and retail, whatever goes with the price on, so that makes it. And that there, from their point of view, an accessory use can be considered non-residential, that is what you said. Okay. That's, that's what you said, correct, James, your argument?
You know, we were.
Oh, you're not arguing that?
Yeah, maybe an argument for a different plan, but we were talking about this plan, I was with this gentleman. Uh, Adam, is it? We were arguing that it's one building and you look at the ground floor of that building and all of the uses together. We haven't gotten to a, a place that we separated it, what?
So I do have, I do have design comments, I guess, I mean, I would. I, I think, just, I mean, start out, it's a challenge to work with this property, right? It's an odd shape, you have a historic resource. Uh, there's probably many other challenges we could have, right? So it's definitely, uh, uh, i- in terms of trying to do what you're trying to do, I guess I should say, right? To, to, to add a lot more program. Um, my personal opinion is that the parking and vehicular circulation is a big part of the problem because it's driving so much of the layout of the site. Um, you know, the, 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 the front yard parking is probably off the table because it doesn't conform, I, I don't think, but even, even so, it's not the right thing to give to the site and its utility for the site is very, very low. Like two, two parking spaces with tight geometry don't really add the amenity that's being described, I don't think, as much as, you know, clear direction or weird park. The driveway might be adding something more value, but again, very constrained. The parking for the, the residential program itself is, I don't know that you could actually get this many, um, spaces once you try to do all the geometry of backing out, maybe, but you know, you're really, really pushing it and the dominant thing that you're using the plan for on a, you know, is this parking and circulation. And when you go to market the units, they're all ten feet off of the side of the property, but you know, Falcon is looking over a sort of, uh, they don't have a yard to look at, they don't have really anything to look at much, so the, uh, you're, you're taking, when it's a large site and you're creating nothing for the apartments to, to interact with, if that makes sense. Uh, with the exceptions to the ones that might face onto meeting council lane. Um, all the, all the other facades don't really face on that much. I think the argument that the gallery, so we, we heard that, you know, there, there could be some discussion back and forth about whether demolishing the addition is appropriate for the historic resource. But even setting that aside, you know, it, it is a question whether this would constitute an addition onto the house or whether it's sort of the gallery's kind of fig leaf to try to make it seem like it's an addition onto the structure. Um, I think you could argue that it serves as a walkway from the parking garage to the commercial and so on, but it's a pretty, pretty tenuous connection, because if you deleted it, the, the, the thing works exactly the same way. Right? So, uh, I do wonder if you could get a similar amount of program through reorganizing it. I think it probably, if it was two buildings, it might make it easier. It might not, but it might make it easier to make it read as a, she might have to give something up. And I, I'm sure you'll hear people's impressions about, well, you heard people want to preserve the house, the, if they maximize its view from Montgomery as a historic resource, so to make sure that the structure doesn't say bloom over at the rear and that it's compatible with the surrounding land. And if you went further with architecture, you know, it, it might clarify some of these issues. But I do think it's, it's going to be, uh, these eighty-eight parking spaces, the parking spaces facing the driveway, for example, the whole experience of the ground floor is just going to be.
That guy in the white shirt.
Excuse me. Please.
Oh, it's not you, dude.
So that's my problem. I don't know.
Okay. Um, I'll just add one, one comment. Um, I, I particularly think that after you had to like list the dead rock principles of what we're trying to accomplish, it's not parking in front of buildings. Simply enough, I'd start. Uh, of course parking makes sense, people would love to pull off the street and park in the parking spaces, but, um, we, we really have, have, uh, tried everything we can to prevent parking in front of parking in front of buildings uh, from happening, so that it is so out of touch with the spirit of what we're trying to achieve. No matter what you think your arguments are, but I think that is, there's going to be a very, very hard sell here at Dargo to do that. I, I also think we see a lot of proposals, as Adam pointed out, and I think Jen sort of pointing out too, which, um, they'll overboard in the automobile infrastructure and the, and the infrastructure, driveways and so forth. And I think we, we constantly see among our commissioners, among our community, uh, desire for strategies that really minimize, minimize the amount of land that's devoted to cars. Uh, we are, we are building a walking community here, not a driving. It's important for us, in all cases, to try and figure out whether it's the way we can minimize the noise things. I think, uh, it's interesting about how parking then begins to drive a site, uh, addition to the house. So I think that's all, that's really, that's really and how that, that kind of drives the quality of the experience of the project, I think that's all, that's all worth considering. Um, like what I've been saying about that ground floor, um, given the way our code works, I, I think that if they're, you know, having a little gym, I suppose, to park in spaces facing the street is obviously better, you know? No matter what the code interpretations are, having some kind of active on the street recognizes what we're trying to create, which is interesting that a street, it's not a place where people are walking by parking lots. So wherever the code layouts are, I think that's, that's, that's not a terribly bad outcome to have a gym on the front. Appreciate your, you're thinking about what the street, the streets give the experience would be like. I'm, I'm not sure about the code interpretation, but I, I don't think that's a, at least based on that outcome. Um, so the, and, and I am, I really truly wish if that, um, connector really didn't have a essential function, was only there to kind of help you fulfill certain parts of code requirements, such that you can find a way uh, to, to do that, one of the things I wanted to ask is if, if that, if you could accomplish this and, and receive approval for it, more or less, but then seek a variance to eliminate that direction. Then wouldn't be a variance that is which, 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 uh, which your overall development is contingent on, just something to achieve a better outcome. Uh, would that be a route to consider a way to eliminate that? Which means if you didn't get variance, you could still go ahead, right? It's just that if you got the variance and you could eliminate that, and it would be a slightly nicer project, is that something we consider? I think you could consider that. I'm going to ask now, um, if the, if anyone has a planning permission, have a clue.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief comment, I have a clue for the county planner, uh, which is, that didn't, that didn't come up yet to this meeting, which is related to the connector hallway, um, that we've seen that there are these, these, uh, uh, additions here, that kind of is proposed to demolish them. There's clearly some kind of a doorway here at the very sort of west edge of the rear of the price house already. But the connector hallway that's proposed goes from the new proposed building all the way across the rear of the price house, I think to approximately this location. And if instead the connector hallway could be significantly shorter and just lead to this doorway, it would leave most of the rear of the price house unobstructed. So that's, I think that, you know, as it, just from a design perspective, having the connector hallway be shorter and just connecting to whatever doorways are here, that's, uh, that that would, that would result in a better project and, uh, just to weigh in from the county perspective. And, uh, just to weigh in, from the county perspective, this is, this area is the town, the town center land use in our comprehensive plan and we do not want to see parking in front of buildings. So from the county comprehensive plan perspective, we also would request that you try to find a way to do the parking without putting the spaces in front of, especially as a historic structure. That's it.
Um, I will, uh, open it up to public comment and then, um, come back to commissioners. Uh, so I'll start with the public who are in the room, uh, which is one person. If you introduce yourself and that, your thoughts tonight.
Sure, thanks. Um, I'm Kathleen Elmer. I represent the Lorimerian Conservancy. For those who are watching online, the Conservancy is a non-profit organization that serves, uh, Lorimerian and Narber. So I first have a question for the commission and this, can you clarify, uh, whether this project will be going to Harber because looking at, uh, the plan and it whistles. It appears that, uh, several proposals, uh, would require a certificate of appropriateness, um, the removal of the rear additions and also the one-story corridor connecting the old building to the new building could be covering, uh, window openings and and the preservation ordinance. Doing that to a, to a resource would require, uh, certificate of appropriateness. And so I, I think from, um, Mr. Rose's testimony, he wasn't sure either whether this would be going before the Harber. So if, uh, we could get an answer to that tonight, though, it'd be great. Uh, certainly would be our recommendation, our part. The proposal, uh, does, does require that. Let's see. The second question that I have is in, in the African plan, um, I see a square box representing the the Price House, but I don't see the porch addition on that.
That is part of the the box that you see there. That porch addition is part because it spans from that existing structure, so you won't see that as a.
You don't see it as a projection.
Correct.
Right, okay. Um, uh, third comment that I I would like to make, uh, uh, is with regard to the the parking in the front. So regardless of whether it needs to go in. I'm happy to hear that, uh, commissioners of the area think, think that if it doesn't, um, it's, it's entirely inappropriate place to put, um, parking. I just want to draw your attention back to this building that we're looking at. It's the eighteen oh three Price House. It's the most significant building in Narber. The owner of the building, uh, owned, you know, hundreds of acres. Narber was essentially created because of him. The building has been subsumed by development and it has lost a lot of its context. But fortunately, um, I'm I'm very happy to know that there is somebody out there who's interested in revitalizing and rehabbing this building and giving it a new use because the the previous owner, like an hospital, uh, was, uh, neglected the building, um, for a long period of time, but in the course of neglecting this building, in some ways saved it. So the building has remarkable, um, architectural integrity inside and outside. And it's just, um, one of the handful of buildings in this area that really retains its, uh, its historic fabric. Um, but also the context in the front, you really get to see, you get to see the building. And I know that with a rehab, um, attention will be paid to, uh, you know, making repairs and painting and, you know, really screwing it up to make it look nice from Montgomery Avenue. So putting parking in front of that, um, really sort of, it really diminishes it. It also diminishes the pedestrian experience. So again, you know, whatever the proposal says, anywhere that you put parking, uh, let's try to avoid having it in the front. Let's see, uh. Oh, and then the last thing, it's, and it's typical, again, I think, without seeing elevations like Demme and Heidi mentioned, it's really hard to read this building or to understand it, um, from the street or from the rear. But if it's going to be three stories high, it it really assumes the the price building, uh, which is, you know, it's a gem in Narber. So I hope that you can pay attention to those kinds of, you know, larger details when you're refining your plan uh, to find a way, uh, to maintain the the presence of the Price House on on Montgomery Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um, I would like to invite members of the public who are, um, online to, um, let me know if you are interested in commenting or asking any questions about this project. If you are, please, uh, indicate that in the chat or use the, uh, raise your hand function to see three or four people in the public. Five, six people in the public out of the meeting. Is there anyone there who would like to make a comment or ask a question? I don't see anyone educating that, so we will close the public comment on this topic. Okay. So, um, the first question I'll ask, are there any, um, planning commissioners tonight? We don't have to, uh, make a recommendation tonight. Council has a telestrum business meeting to, um, formally final to to make a vote on this application. So we are not, it is not necessary for us if we don't feel ready to make a recommendation tonight. So, uh, what I'd like to do is get a sense of playing commissioners, uh, uh, if you feel as if we are heading toward some sort of, I guess, we'd like to commit to the council or wrap up into a recommendation. Uh, or you personally to, uh, provide some feedback on the application at this point and ask for, uh, the applicants to come back at the meeting. Does anyone feel like, uh, we're at the point where you are interested in making a recommendation to council? No, anyone? Well, it's not going to, to council purpose. No, but we could make a, but if we were to make a recommendation, we would not, we would not recommend approving the permanent layout as a base. Like, that's not acceptable. I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to recommend that, so. Right, or am I? No, no, I'm just asking, if you, would you rather just kind of, can I? I I guess we have a choice. We can either, uh, assess our duty and your recommendation to council and we're actually taking on this application or we can sort of just summarize what our impressions are of it and what the strengths and weaknesses are. Issue that letter and then ask the applicant to come back next month. So the first question is, does anyone feel strongly about making your recommendations tonight?
I think it's him.
Okay. So my next question is that what I'd like to surface is to keep, if you feel like we should absolutely give feedback on this project that we can agree on, on life and census.
I'd like to go back to the idea of there being two buildings. Um, and I would just like to ask what the possibility is of making two properties? Because the, the apartment building cost, I mean, if, and this is actually a question, I don't know who this is a question for. You, Kevin, if it was subdivided, could that property be considered part of residential district? Would it be rezoned at the same time and therefore it could be an apartment building and be completed completely differently and more in the residential neighborhood? And be separate from the Price House, which is a town or our borough and really would benefit from being treated as a separate property and would be a lovely commercial building on its own.
I would, I, there's, can I pose that as a question back to the commission?
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we did the two-building route, uh, that would require a conditional use, um, would the commission be amenable to a use of an apartment building on the rear? If we went rear building in that scenario?
Well, and I, and I guess it's a question for you too, it's more for anybody here could weigh in. What's the difference between two principal buildings a lot versus two separate properties?
I I think that Adam touched on that actually, which would require the mixed use in the rear building.
Well, no, if it's, if it's a different zoning district.
I don't think that's gonna work out because even if that works out to a different zoning, it would be 3B, you could not allow parking in 3B, give like a different.
Is that right? I mean, I don't know. Would it be automatically 3B?
Well, that could be adjacent, the home that can sound like it's adjacent is 3B.
Unless we just sort of, we see some type of, but it didn't have to be that large, kind of changed.
Yeah.
But I think his question stance is.
So that would be good.
A condition, more of a conditional.
Could we make that a condition? In that case, I could, I I might be able to work on that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the way it fronts.
Which would allow the residential use on the first floor. And we can look into maybe some other options regarding that, if that would be amenable.
I mean, I personally, I think that's a nice use of the site, but.
Um, before we, I think that's really worth talking about for a minute. Um, however, Heidi, I'd like, you kind of proposed a solution, but I'm kind of wondering what's the concern trying to address.
I'm not, I'm concerned with how it fits into the residential neighborhood.
Like the transition to that.
Yes.
Okay, um, well. We could throw it, it's sort of a conversation, but I'm curious, how do other planning commissioners react to that if it were possible to create two buildings here that have one of them, the rear one, being an apartment building there? And I'm gonna get into gymnastics of the zoning. Uh, I'm trying to find our our thoughts about a solution that's good for the community. Uh, do you think that that would be, uh, an outcome that would be worth driving towards? That's what you're, my heart. And Dave, um, are you still with us? Feel free to jump in.
Yes, I'm here. Um, struggling to follow the conversation.
Um, I know you're not feeling well, Dave, too, so thanks for hanging in there. Um, is it, how do other folks react to that idea?
I I think it's worth, it's, you know, it's boring. Um, and, you know, it would maintain the integrity of the historic piece. It would also, I think, lend better to scaling toward the residential. Uh, and that core, you know, gallery corridor thing is is sort of intriguing as it was. You know, I could only imagine it being like a big glass sculpture, like perched on the building somehow. I think it's forced. The connection is kind of forced. And it, you know, there are so many other primary, um, problems like, you know, configuring this site in a way that really, uh, is more about the property than the logistics of getting a full length parking spot. Um, I think it's a good suggestion.
Do you think that's just in concept?
I'm not so sure. I mean, I, I think either if we're talking about getting to the same place, you know, which is like appropriately appropriate addition or additional building that relates well to original building, you know, that transitions well to something. I'm not sure that, that turning that, just letting the lot on the residential lot back there is, it's like, there's so many hurdles and contortions that we need to do for that residence. We'd see to the residence like you're creating a lot of special.
You know, well, it could be achieved now. It's a group of multiple buildings.
Yeah.
If you don't feel sufficient of work here, uh, because of parking requirements, setback requirements, um, things that nature that I think, uh, are gonna create more issues than they resolve, probably.
Yeah.
Um, so if I, if we're gonna go that route, I would, I would kind of focus on, on this building idea and, you know, down that route. If that, if not, we can meet soon.
It seems.
The current road too, if you know.
It seems to me like the current submission, they progress on that, you know. As, you know, as you submitted it now is one, you know, I mean, I'm inclined to buy the, the, those all the pieces. Cause I feel that's the better outcome.
So just to be clear, we're not trying to spell the subject.
I know, I understand, but.
Uh, what we're trying to do is just, I have a concern about the, the site plan.
Yeah.
And the connection and all that, we're, we're trying to think about how the way this development sits in the meeting. We're not really trying to parse the issues. So that, what, what I'm saying is if, if we follow the route of saying there might be a path that says splitting this into two buildings, kind of like the way they are by calling the back one apartment building. Uh, does, does that, is that a solution that might get us to a better result than than, uh, than, uh, working with with site plan and connections and all that? That's, that's a very, um, do you have any thoughts about that? Getting to a better result for the community, you know, who originally asked you where to keep points?
So he said parking not in front of the building, like we said, that, uh, I think, I agree with Kathleen that, you know, I think if you're trying to accentuate the historic structure, you gotta give it its its first state. And I think that's attaching to it or croaching on it probably is going to be significantly an element, you know, historic asset. So I think that's one part of the project is what to do with the Price House itself. And if it, if it doesn't affect a great interior, I hope we can find a way to, to, you know, to to preserve that and and answer it as best we can. As far as the residential component, uh, you know, so I think I agree that the issue is, there's, you know, it's how do you transition to the 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 residential neighborhood that's behind the property, uh, is a key issue. Uh, I tend to agree with Todd's point that, uh, you know, putting some kind of use on the ground floor uh, in this area, though, it helps to activate the sidewalk, for example, the gym or any other type of similar use. But I am worried that this, uh, I guess I'm worried about two things. One is the massing of the building, uh, it sort of fills out like a balloon the rest of the Y. And then everything on the ground floor is just automobile or put tailgates, uh, except for the sidewalk front, so. And I think the, the, I don't, I don't, I think a lot of that depends on the design, but I think if, if, if the historic, uh, uh, advisory recommendation is not to alter the historical building then I think it's not gonna work this way at all.
By the way, I don't think I answered your question, um, Kathleen, sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, Adam, you finish it then.
About the heart, yeah, she asked about the heart. The other, I guess, element that I don't have, uh, I have to read up more on was the issue of shared parking because I am looking at, you know, the program proposed with ten residential units, I don't know what the right number is. Get to that number and all that, but with the commercial and the residential together, they were saying they need eighteen parking spaces. And, uh, you know, the world is changing with office right now and, you know, the shark next to the, you know, the office building next door that has that has parking lots most of the time. Uh, these uses are intended to be redeveloped, surrounded this parcel. Uh, I personally think, you know, that for commercial use, you know, for office, you know, maybe for parking, Jason, parking some of that, have a parking space and all that, so personally. But I know that may not be what the code requires, but I do think that that's an issue. To me, it's a problem trying to pack parking for the historic building, for example. If we're trying to save this historic building, we don't want, uh, like two owners for parking for that kind of a use, personally. And, yeah, Kathleen had asked about whether the project could go there.
Right, so, um, the, um, the borough engineer and the boroughs are here, officer, and their letters, um, have noted that a certificate of appropriateness shall, shall be required. So, and I, I'm not sure that you challenged that, assuming or recalling saying if that's necessary, you would do that. So is that the case?
Yeah, if it's required, of course, we will do it.
Right, right. The zoning officer, the borough engineer indicated that it's required, so.
Yeah, I just got the letter today, so we'll review the, maybe, uh, if there was a compromise, uh, along the line that we're talking, that might change. In other words, uh, I don't know if we'll get there, but if that connection wasn't made, I don't know if that would change anything, so. Um, if one is required, uh, we'll certainly, uh, certainly give.
Um, Dave, you have any thoughts about when you would like frame into our, kind of, set of reactions to this project?
Yeah.
Dave? So I guess, I guess to, uh, wrap this up, I think, um, I, I guess what I sense is, um, there's, there's, the primary concern I'm hearing about is about the relationship of the new, with the added structure to the price house. There's different aspects of that, the scale and massing of it, the closeness of it, the way the back, uh, part of the price house is treated with the additions and the, the connection. Uh, there's just a general overall concern about whether this is. Uh, well, well, we're happy that the house can be preserved, uh, under our historic district agreements. Is this, is this development sensitive enough to that? Uh, a second concern is the, the kind of bottom orientation of the site plan, uh, and particularly the amount of area that is defined auto circulation, which I think just many of us seem strenuous. And, uh, in, including the parking, which I don't think anybody else believes is inappropriate, uh, fully used in front of that yard, whether or not the code, uh, whenever once your petition is. Uh, and I think, um, uh, I guess I would, I would say those are, are there any other major, major issues than you think? The, the relationship with the new building to the old buildings, the, the auto circulation, parking. Are there any other major buckets of issues that would like to fly?
The relationship to the neighborhood.
Transition to the neighborhood.
Uh, can I just ask a question? So there's no rear yard, uh, lot like this? Is that the correct interpretation of this? I mean, Kevin, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, Heidi.
Yeah. But there's no rear yard on this property?
No, I mean, technically, we don't have standards. This isn't a corner lot, so we can use that table in the rear. Um, so we just kind of went with what made sense in our opinion. We both agree with the site. You have the principal frontage facing Montgomery, a, a secondary frontage facing Meeting House. And, um, the remaining three sides were beauty side yards, and I think that makes the most sense.
There, there is a, I just want to clarify, there's no secondary frontage. There's a, there's a primary frontage of Montgomery. And then, uh, the, uh, frontage not Meeting House is just the frontage, uh, the secondary frontage, uh, secondary providing a corner lot.
A weird lot.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make that distinction.
It's like a through lot.
It's like a through lot, really, yeah.
And hopefully one of that mentioned as. Yeah.
But I think if it does, I, house, the side next to the house is a rear. I mean, by.
Exactly.
There's, uh, three sides.
Yeah.
So Kevin, you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've been going in and out, but I'm still here.
Wouldn't there be a rear?
Did you say why wouldn't there be a rear?
Rear lot, rear lot.
I just think, look, I think looking at the property, um, you wouldn't want to call, um, is Michelle still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Michelle, do you mind bringing up the, um, third page of sketch drawing? Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that if you were to call anything, again, Montgomery has to be the frontage there. So I don't think it's appropriate to call what I would call the opposite of Montgomery, which is Meeting House, the rear. Then I also don't think it's appropriate to call, um, the property line adjacent to Meeting House, the rear to Montgomery, because it's a side to Meeting House. I just think based on how different, uh, outlines makes this a little tough to classify everything, but I don't see it. I don't see any way to put a rear yard in that would make sense, looking at it from either Meeting House or from Montgomery.
Which is why a subdivision would cause significant loss of use.
One of many.
Like what?
The others.
What I don't, um, is, is there anyone besides Jim who has a concern about, about the possibility, uh, 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 allowing for an apartment building if it allows for, if, if for some reason other that allows for either, uh, same planning, how, how, better design, how, how particularly regard uh, it's like, it's to the price house.
I, I think, so to be realistic with the parcel, right? I mean, if you were, if you're going to develop the parcel with any kind of larger use than, say, a single family house or something, which wouldn't be what the zoning calls for anyway, uh, you know, what else could go back there, right? If you put it, if you put an office building back there, which probably, I'm not sure what the commercial market for that would be, but just hypothetically, it's then next to the single family house, right? It's the next lot now. Um, you know, it's off of the busy commercial arterial, so it's not either a retail site. So you might be able to put in like a gym or something that's not relying so much on the frontage on Montgomery, but it, it seems like the performa is gonna work much better as a residential unit. The, the use on this, because it's sort of tucked into the residential context. You know, and then the price house is on the commercial frontage, but it's the historic asset that you're trying to keep and alter. So I, I think that, to me, it's, you know, it, it, it recognizes the site as it is potentially. There is an argument to be made that that's, you know, sort of the highest and best use given the constraints of the property.
Dave, are you on the line still?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you, did you hear the question that we're asking? We're trying to sort of summarize the major issues, the major issues being, uh, the, the, uh, relationship of the addition to the original structure. Uh, second one being the, uh, amount of space devoted to auto circulation and parking in front of the price house. And then the third is, how do you make the best possible transition to the adjoining residential neighborhood?
Right.
Right.
You're breaking, you're breaking a lot.
Um, in exploring the site further, would figuring out a way for the rear building to be considered, for there to be a rear building considered as a department building, that be something you'd be open to if it produced a better solution?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be open, I'd be open to hearing more about that. I, I, I'm, I'm working at a bit of a disadvantage because I missed most of the discussion. But yeah, I, I think there's, there are other avenues that should be explored here.
Um, okay, well, I think we've gotten about as far as we can. I'm kind of curious what your reactions are to the, so there's three kind of large issues. Trying not to debate, there's five points to go, but like how this fits into this site. Yeah, um, and willingness that's or what might it, it consider to be a lot of possible issues for the most part. Normally, if there's one to summarize, they, they, you know, next week we have that, so they would have an opportunity, if they wanted, to do this. Uh, before, that's kind of how things might work. Uh, I'm wondering, um, how, how that all, how you, how you react to all that, or do you feel like with these comments in mind, are things you could work further? Do you? Just in, in trying?
I'm gonna get this down. So that seems to be a hot topic, um, and I think that, that's probably the easiest workaround out of the entire, all, out of all the issues raised. Um, so, so that certainly we can work together to resolve that. I think one of the ways to resolve that is to find a home for those parking spots, um, uh, and just sitting here kind of thinking it through, um, I think, uh, that the idea of doing a conditional use for an apartment building, doing a separate building may allow for, um, uh, and I don't want to get too technical, but, you know, if I can put residential use on the first floor, I can maybe move parking elsewhere. Uh, and it may be a better outcome for everyone. Uh, so I think it's probably worth exploring that if that's a route that you all are open to going. I don't wanna go down that path and then find out, you know, in three weeks or four weeks that, you know, okay, so we don't want to do that. Um, so I would ask that we just be clear with each other about that if there has to be offline discussions regarding that and how to do that. Um, and then kind of work through that, but I think that would be, I think probably makes the most sense for the neighborhood. For me, for the planning committee, I think just, I think that's worth talking for. I think that resolves the parking issue. Um, regarding the architectural stuff, uh, you know, we're just not there yet. Uh, I would say, um, that's part of the preliminary, uh, sketch plan, um. But we will certainly take, you know, all of those recommendations into consideration when, when we get to that point. Uh, so I think that's, that's my general feedback. Um, so again, if, if that conditional use for a parking building is a route that we want to go down, uh, again, just to be clear, and, and if we're gonna go down that road, I'd like to, you know, make sure we get to the end.
We're gonna need feedback on that from council.
Of course, of course, because there currently is no route to that. And I would, that's one reason, I would feel bad about sending that on. No, 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 we can do that. No, no, no. No, what, what, what we can do is, is, um, I don't know, Jim, if you, how sorry you want to register your, your thoughts about that, but what I would do is write a letter to council and say, here's what we found, here's the discussion we had, here's what we think we have happened, and then ask them to provide feedback at their meeting. And I know, I don't think it's fair to ask you until you hear anything that council might have to say. They might say at the meeting, or solicitor make that, I don't know. But I think what we would do is simply say, here's the concerns, here's the issues, here's some paths we think might be valuable to, to explore, and some of them might require some changes for the code. And that, you know, given Jim's comment that there's mostly a feeling that would be a good idea, that's one concern. So that's, that's how, uh, he would follow up.
Oh, I was talking to Mike. What we think makes sense, and we do appreciate you, uh, you're being willing to take the time to write a letter to council. And that feedback might be valuable, but we're also thinking we've, we've spent so much time with you tonight, we got some good ideas. We're thinking maybe we should come back to you first, see if we made any progress in that, uh, go, uh.
Yeah.
So to not have you write the letter, we wouldn't go to the council just yet. We would regroup and come back to you in April and see where we stand.
Okay. So that would, that would, I think, that would be fine.
And, uh, and in the meantime, if it's, is there someone on, or anyone to, maybe it's Kevin, um, to contact in the meantime if we have questions as we're going down that, because what I'd, I'd like to do is come in April with a plan that we've worked through together, um, that we start all know where we're getting to in April, and then, you know, hopefully then, uh, you know, the board and everyone can, we can still keep this moving for an April, but basically.
So, so what I'd suggest in that, Karen, is, um, in terms of technical questions, if there's zoning questions, I, you always have the option to connect. Kevin, if there are engineering questions, stormwater or whatever, you always have the option to connect, contact there anytime you want.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the questions that will probably come up will be more along lines like, is this an appropriate project?
Right. And what I would suggest there is, um, I think the best course would be to kind of, when you're ready to have that conversation, contact the borough office, kind of contact either Michelle Carroll or Samantha Bryant, and they will convene a meeting and don't probably invite a couple of us, if I, if I, whoever. I would prefer that to go through the borough office, they know what's happening. They, they traffic all of us.
Yeah.
But our, our, our history is we're quite willing, so we're interested in getting good results, and so we're interested in coming to this conversation. Um, I don't want to obfuscate Kathleen, but Kathleen is a fountain of, of information about historic property and the nature of it and ways to approach how that could be. You know, so, um, that sounds like a good perspective. Thank you. Okay. All right, um. So, and let's just go through it and see what we can do, um. Thanks, I'll follow you. Thank you, thank you. Um. So on our, in that station circle, south of, it's building, I started a lot, um, I'm gonna start. And I'd pretty much like to make sure we talk about this station circle and you, um, because you have responsibility to make a recommendation to council about that, and this station circle is a, let's just say a train that's moving into the station. So it'd be good to have, Dave. Dave?
Yeah, are you?
Well, I wanted to ask, well, what I wanted to ask is I don't know how you're feeling and how long you want to stick around. Uh, would you prefer to talk about Station Circle and then call it a night, or would you like to stick through both topics?
Yeah, why, why don't, why don't I, uh, give my brief report, um, and then as much as I would hear the rest of the conversation, to tell you the truth, to, to understand about 10% of it really doesn't do, do anybody much good, so I'll probably sign off. Um, but, um, excuse me?
The floor is yours, and we can hear you justify.
Okay, well, that's half of the equation anyway. Um, okay, um, as you all probably know, uh, and I apologize ahead of time if I go into a fit of coughing, but you'll, please bear with me. Um, Jim Cornwell and I met with, uh, Michelle Pananopoulos, um, and Jim and I have met several times since then, uh, to organize a, a design effort, uh, uh, intended to engage the public and, uh, solicit a public opinion and get design ideas about the renovation of what was once known as the Station Circle, and now we are referring to as the Town Square. Uh, the area in question is actually larger than just the immediate traffic circle. And we're, we're looking, um, at the area that generally extends from the corner of North Essex to Haver, and Haverford Avenues over to. over to, uh, a place a little bit to the east of the intersection of Forest and Haverford Avenues. So, you know, we see this, this effort as looking at, at redeveloping the, um, the landscape, the hardscape and softscape for, for that entire zone and not just the, the immediate area of what we tend to think of as the Station Circle. What we're imagining is a series of three public meetings occurring in April and May with the idea of wrapping up by Memorial Day, which will, um, begin with an introduction, uh, to the, to the existing, uh, cer- circle and, uh, surrounding site, uh, soliciting a public opinions and then having a, um, a bit of a design exercise similar to ones that we did when we were, uh, putting together the form-based code to engage the public in, in working over, uh, site plans on a series of tables. Excuse me. Um, and then having a wrap-up meeting, uh, to present the ideas that were presented in, in the, the previous meeting. Uh, during that time too, the, um, the borough will be issued, issuing a request for proposals to a pre-selected, um, short list of qualified, uh, landscape architects, uh, to be able to provide design services to take those ideas that were uh, presented in the public meetings and at the Borough Council's direction, um, develop them into actual construction documents, uh, that could be used to implement the renovation. So we are right now in an information, excuse me, information gathering stage. The critical part of this, you don't want to go through this whole thing and then uncover some critical piece of information that completely derails the, the process. So, uh, we're working with the borough to, uh, uh, find out various questions about land ownership, uh, both of the, uh, uh, the circle and adjacent properties, uh, utility information, whether there are any easements or that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, so that's going on now. Uh, I have a, a draft for a request proposal for the design teams that I'm going to circulate to Jim, uh, tomorrow. Uh, so we'll, we'll, we'd be moving that along. And as I said, the, the idea is to get this in place so that, uh, the meetings will be held, uh, probably the first one would be sometime in mid-April. And the last one would be before, the third one would be before, um, Memorial Day. Um, we're going to need, uh, quite a bit of help on this. So anybody on the planning commission, I've heard from some people already who are willing to jump in, there'll be a, quite a bit of legwork. So if you would, uh, if you haven't done so already, if you will email Jim and me, then we will get back in touch with you at the right time. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions from the public, one member of the public? Well, Dave, thanks both to you and Jim.
One, one more, one more point I didn't make, and that is that from, from the planning commission's side of the table and, um, and I think I can say the Borough Council side, is that we, we, uh, approach this with no preconceived ideas. The idea is not to put design ideas in front of the public and, and try to either influence them or, or, uh, skew the discussion in any, in any way. Uh, the idea is really to start with a blank piece of paper and hear what, what the public has to say about what works, what doesn't work, uh, what, what they like that happens there, what they don't like that happens there, what they would like to see happen there, and from that develop the design. But it really is, uh, while all of us all probably have some of our own preconceived ideas, the idea is really to try to start from a blank, as, as much as possible from a blank slate. And the heavens open up.
Hey, Dave. I'm not sure if the, if the powers that they like this, but I'm going to. Push back from the weather. All right, Dave, well, thank you guys. Keep us posted.
Thank you. Now I really literally cannot hear anything because of the rain pounding on my roof. So I will, I will bid you a good night.
Hi.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next file, which is the accessory dwelling ordinance. Now, uh, you know, we've discussed this for many months. Um, and, uh, shaped up a draft ordinance which council has that better. Um, so a, a formality in the process is for us to write counsel. We have the opportunity to make a recommendation to council about this ordinance we've already prepared. So, um, normally at this stage it is a formality, but we did receive today some questions, comments from Dave Schonhardt, uh, which I forwarded to you when we received them. Um, and I, I think that it's, um, important to make sure we're familiar with the questions he's raised and make sure that we have confidence that, um, the code we've offered addresses them. I, I believe they do. Um, but I wanted to, uh, first ask if anyone on the planning commission had a chance to review them and if you flagged anything that you feel merits discussion or concern, um, uh, or anything that you think merits our attention in the matter.
Sorry, attention for considering or for answering those questions?
Okay, good question. Well, first, is, is that, did Mr. Schonhardt flag anything you feel like we didn't consider and maybe we ought to take up? I don't want to rehash things we've already decided. Um, and then I do think council would like us to be able to, um, address in a simple way, um, these questions or comments, which, um, I'm hopeful we could be most of just by going back for our minutes and, you know, replaying what we're going to say. But I guess the first question is, is there anything in the letter that you found, huh? Uh, we actually didn't talk about that, or that's a very interesting question?
I guess it'd be interesting, so the, I think some of the later comments I feel probably have to do with, um, structure probably recent occupancy. So just for my comfort, I want to just reassure that, yes, you know, it's, it's a review expected to have a little bit the way that the commenters described it. But I feel like we have to discuss that probably with questions.
Well, I see Kevin is still, yes, so, Kevin. So first of all, our assumption's always been that whether new construction or renovation, a building will have to be built. It's been clear to us from our architecture colleagues on the commission from day one, and I think it's always been an assumption. Kevin, can you, we, I know it wasn't until late in the day that I sent this to you. Um, did you have a chance to look at this at all?
I've been trying to skim over it for the last five minutes and I actually talked to David on the phone. So I maybe answered some of his questions already.
Well, in general, um, can you explain to us, uh, any, any, anything about your conversation with him that you think would be important? And in general, what the interplay is between the building code and the zoning code for our satisfaction?
Yeah, I think, uh, David's concerns primarily dealt with proximity to property lines and how that it's a fire hazard. Um, and I, that, like we just said, the building code or residential code will kind of take care of them regardless of what the zoning code allows or doesn't allow. I think generally you want them to agree. In other words, you want the zoning code to allow something that the building code, um, won't. But there's always an opportunity to make it compliant. You can always construct something safer, make good. Um, one of the big concerns was that we now allow, um, accessory structures to be in property lines, whereas the building code would require a specific type of fire resistance rating on that exterior wall. It wouldn't allow for openings, so that could, that could cause issues with egress from the dwelling unit. That was a concern. He was also concerned with, some of our properties have, um, kind of the four-shaped garages or even the two-shared garages that have a zero setback. He was super concerned with that. And the type of construction would be required to be essentially a firewall. Um, and now are we requiring that onus to be shared between the property owner where the garage spans or how I would be, I guess, playing that and enforcing that? Um, so a lot of his questions were geared towards technical, towards me. Um, and not, I don't think they were geared towards you. But I think ultimately he just wanted the codes to mimic each other. Again, he doesn't want the zoning code to allow something, the building code generally wouldn't require additional, kind of methods of construction that are uncommon.
Um, I think our, our, our general conversation about this was that where there might be a difference in the zoning for the building code, obviously, it could be father followed, even if it required uncommon construction methods, which would potentially just be a rating on people's ability to do things that aren't safe. Right? Uh, are you, are there any inconsistencies between these codes that give you concern, Cat?
The one I haven't, he didn't bring up was D, and I kind of haven't had time to digest that. So you want to give me a few minutes to skim through D and make sure that I don't see anything else that stands out? If you want to circle back in a couple of minutes?
Okay, of course. Okay, so Jim, that was, were there any other issues that you felt? Um, I do want to point out, um, that there was a concern about, uh, what would happen, the fact that, that the ability, whether or not somebody who created an accessory dwelling would have the ability to subdivide their property, create two properties, therefore have two houses. Um, and Jim and I both kind of reacted in similar, we might, I'll speak for myself, Jim can speak for himself. Um, I think that is a rare circumstances because in order to subdivide, uh, you would need that access to a lot, lot to a, to a street, to have a property in front of a street. And so that means you need either an extra wide lot or a through block lot. Uh, even if it were in the historic district, um, um, you know, you would still need at least to subdivide at least enough area to put a cottage on. And I, I, I guess, uh, I don't think there's a reason to be concerned that someone might build a house that's small, smaller than the cottage or have a lot of the property. I think he was concerned that since we have this rule about, um, I mean, I mean, I'm inferring he is concerned that because we have a rule that the ADU, that the property owner must live in a slightly ADU is, that by subdividing, you then break that link and you get all of a sudden a new housing unit on the market. Um, um, that didn't have a parking space, but I think if it were subdivided, it would have to have a parking space. And then, uh, uh, um, at the end of the day, I don't, I honestly don't think we're concerned about having an extra house where we would permit one as an ADU. So I didn't feel it to be.
An extra house that's, that was eight hundred square feet.
Yeah. That could be there for, for ADU. So I didn't, I just, I played it through, I just don't think it's concerned. Jim, what, you commented on this.
I think it's, I think it's a non-issue. If you have the ability to subdivide, you need 6,000 square feet for each of the subdivided lots to be fully put up front of it. So, I mean, you're concerned about, like you're saying, you just end up with a, a legal, a lot of legal size, but with a tiny house. Not sure why that's worse than a lot with a normal size.
The building of the ADU does not create any new opportunities for subdivision that weren't up there already. So it doesn't need to be type to ordinance. Right? So if you can subdivide, you can subdivide whether or not you have an ADU on the lot. It doesn't, that doesn't impact your ability to subdivide the lot.
Um, okay, so I don't think anyone's, there's a concern that converting an ADU garage, a functioning garage to an ADU might result in a loss of a parking spot. That the house may have relied on that parking spot and now doesn't have a parking spot. Um, I suppose that could happen.
No, no, we never, we don't allow that. You can't eliminate a parking spot.
We still have that.
If it's required for your house, you can't eliminate a parking spot.
No, it's still a plus.
He would still have to be allowed. And so you could, you could remove the parking spot you're supposed to have. So have that parking spot. Okay. Uh, there's a comment about, it's not the borough's right to waive. We, we are allowing non-conforming buildings, um, in certain circumstances to be, that are non-compliant with the cycling rules, be converted to, uh, accessory dwelling units. They can potentially be expanded even, uh, he writes, it's not the borough's right to waive non-conformity, allow additional non-conformity, the top non-conforming variance. Actually, our code does allow for non-conformities to be expanded by a certain percentage. I believe, uh, that's like 25%. Uh, so I don't believe that is correct.
I, I, that's one comment that made me think a little bit. And I, it made me think that maybe these provisions actually don't need to be in a state ordinance to, um, want to, the whole thing about a non-conforming building. I think that would all be true even if you didn't say it. I think it's probably okay to say it, but, uh, you can use an existing non-conforming building for, like, use isn't non-conforming. So that you can put in a, a conforming use in a non-conforming building.
Right.
Already. But you don't need to say that you can do that.
Right. I think what we're actually saying is, what we want to do is take away the ability to put a non-conforming use in a building that was too, in terms of area that was too big. That's what, we put that in because we wouldn't say it's okay in all circumstances unless the area of the, uh, garage that's being converted is more than 600 feet.
Well, you're getting my, uh, building coverage, building so great comment, which I didn't get to mention. I'm using the wrong term here to get that point first.
Okay, well, um, let me just, there's one other. We got some questions about addressing, but the language for the addressing came from the fire chief and we know who wins. So we're players, we're up against the fire chiefs, right? It's a concern, uh, the, um, um, did not be enforceable that the owner, um, be required to live in an ADU for the primary house. I think we flagged that, planning commission, but Borough Council nevertheless. It's interesting that provision and that is simply an enforcement of that. So we have, um, Chloe has one comment. Kevin, did you come up with any also in the last minute or two of your review?
Yeah, um, like I said, I think a lot of the things are, not a jab at me, but in most municipalities, the zoning kind of unit is completely separate from the construction side. So the zoning officer is very rarely looking at the building permits. Um, luckily, Norbert has that where I do both and I'm looking at them at the same time. So there's not going to be a lot of misinformation on what needs to be provided from a construction standpoint to make these buildings safe as the zoning. And I think the one issue he brought up was that it sounds like he's concerned that the, we have an existing dwelling unit with a garage that has one parking space. That lot is compliant as it, as it pertains to parking. Not only are we removing the garage parking, but now we're providing an additional dwelling unit. And the concern is from a compliant one space per one unit, so now you're spaces per two units. I think that's what he's saying, right?
Well, we are not requiring a parking spot for an ADU.
But I still think he's concerned about the creating a non-conformity, whereas the existing unit had its compliant one space.
How would that be evaluated, Kevin? If that application came in, would they be allowed to convert that garage if they had no other parking option?
No, not if they didn't have one, although unless they were in a district that for parking credit for on-street parking. I mean, they'd have to kind of request that, I could steer them in that direction, but that's, they'd have to have a parking credit or another surface parking spot somewhere else.
They would have to meet their parking requirement one way or the other if they removed the spot to create an ADU.
Yeah, correct.
That's all we need to know then. And then, um, there's one other thing which I thought was here interesting is, um, for buildings that are For buildings that are on the property line or in one or two feet, we did talk about the accessibility. You know, if you need to be repaired. Adam, I think I recall you saying, well, folks work this out all the time, you know. You step on your neighbors once, you can work with the garden, whatever, it happens all the time. I did look this up, and I found there are some ADU ordinances that require you to have an easement. To request easement from your neighbor if your building is too close to the property line. I'm wondering if you all feel that level of formality, Kevin or Chloe, if you have experience that could bring it there. Is that level of formality necessary to, if a building is too close to the days of property life to have an easement? From the, you know, for the ADU owner to get an easement from their neighbor to access buildings from someone else's lot?
Yeah, I mean, I've experienced this quite a bit, especially in the city. But it's some, there's problems where your neighbor's is not accessible, or you guys kind of just don't get along. And sometimes the neighbor is hesitant with that access agreement, whether it's just for maintenance or for construction. It's a tough situation for a homeowner that has like a buy right, either zoning and building permit, but they actually can't. It doesn't allow access. And I think that's why a lot of people push for setting these structures back so that they don't have to get involved in that.
Right, but I think we've noted in our, because we have tight lots, especially if you are converting an existing structure. I don't think we allow new construction that close to the property lines. It's more about converting old structures. So, I guess the question is, if it, I think we dismiss that as a concern, because this happens all the time in our borough if things work out. But would it make sense to revisit that and suggest that an easement be requested from the next door neighbor? If your property, if your ADU is too close to the property? Personally, not a favorite. I think that was our inclination. I'm just, because the public raised this question, I'm asking, I think that was our inclination to be different. Okay, so Chloe, do you have any opinion about that matter?
Um, no, I just looked up the AARP and PA model ordinance that they recommend a minimum four foot setback beside the lot lines, but.
I think we're requiring three, but it's more a matter of existing buildings that are converted that are. Because we live in this built-out community, model codes are usually for. So, have you seen easement issues or access issues?
I haven't.
So, I think our inclination then is, is to say that our goal here is really to facilitate this happening and the extra easement. Is, is more of a barrier than a benefit. Okay, Chloe, I think that's all the things I wanted to just review with you all. I know council member Winston's on, and I'm sure you appreciate having, you know, this information for council. Chloe, what was your issue?
I was just, the, the language about building coverage and. The version, building footprint is in my review letter, so I was thinking you would get to that when we.
There we are.
Okay, we start there. So, there, this term building coverage is used a few times in the draft ordinance. And I think that actually some of them should be building footprint. And one of them maybe should be habitable floor area, so that. And some of them are correct of building coverage. Building coverage is usually expressed as a percentage of the total lot covered by buildings. But there's this, uh, six hundred two, C two. That's the, that's the first one is the.
Chloe, are you saying it should be building?
I think that where it says the maximum building coverage of our accessory dwelling unit shall be 600 square feet, that that should be building footprint instead of building coverage.
So, drafting error, basically. Right. Is that, is that the only correction?
No, the other one is in the non-conforming section where it says the accessory building. An existing accessory building that is non-conforming in regards to a number of things may be converted.
I know.
Oh, sorry.
What, you just cited the number?
Yes. C two E one.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Maybe convert it to an accessory dwelling unit as long as. The accessory building does not exceed the maximum building coverage allowed for an accessory dwelling unit. Not sure whether the intent there is building footprint or habitable floor area or both.
I think it's building, I think the intent was the footprint.
All right, so 600 square feet with building footprint? Then from the, probably also change to.
Exactly, like I was sure. But does any, any other correction?
Uh, those are the only two related to that issue, so.
Okay. Thanks. Do you have one with others?
Okay, so I think the main thing that came up from our internal review is the height requirement, which. We all have a good explanation, but maybe you can clarify for me about the 16 feet height limit. Especially if you're adding an ADU above an existing garage. 16 feet can be adequate for putting an apartment unit above an existing garage. You feel?
Any matter of height, the midpoint?
Yeah, in order to keep it, you know, the median is not over.
So, you could, you know, have that slope, that midpoint. You know, it could actually rise higher than 16.
An existing garage could be 12 feet tall though.
And you can still have a dormer.
You know, this isn't meant for every garage to be converted, but it is possible. Because it's not as tight as it sounds because it's a midpoint.
Okay, and then I wanted to just make sure everyone was aware that I did consult with our public safety and GIS departments outside of the planning commission about the. Unit numbering, and I recommend just a slight adjustment to the language here. So that it will go through our public safety system. So, it's, they really hate like 23 and a half or 23A when addresses. They really want, it's like, it's, they want the same house number on all of the units on the lot, but then to have a unit number that follows. So, either 23 and 23 unit one, or 23 unit one and 23 unit two. And that either of those is an okay solution.
Does that contradict what's written here or just?
Yeah, it does a little bit because what's written in the draft says. A property street number different from the principal building. So, I would recommend just a property unit number different from the principal building.
So, I think what we can do there is ask the solicitor to chat with our fire officials and say that. We appreciate if they confirm with county emergency services.
Right, yeah, we should definitely run it through your, I think it was your police chief who commented, but. And I think his email somewhere, he was just wanting to make sure that the county's 911 system would register this appropriately and this is what we'll get that after.
So, does anyone have any objections to recommending the council with small modifications to the ordinance? That's what I'm going to do is, sometimes if you, if the solicitor would determine whether these are material changes. It will require the ordinance to be re-advertized, which I don't think we want. If it needs to be re-advertized, I recommend solicitor, as if they pass this ordinance, says it, and then when they advertise they hit kill ordinance, they make these corrections. So, they'll roll around another one later, which I don't think will be an issue. So, that's what I'll do. Otherwise, we would recommend to approve this with the modifications recommended by XCPC. I think we need formally vote on that, so all in favor of recommending to approve with the modifications requested by XCPC?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, I have to hope. And then I will also debate the council our responses to Mr. Schoenhardt's comments. I think left in our agenda tonight is infill. Zoning ordinance in the sound of it because it's late, I think we should, should move on. So, in terms of the sound out. Chloe, can you, I know we emailed about this briefly today. Can you talk to us about how it works from what you see at the moment?
Yes, so we are moving forward. I've been meeting monthly with Eric, as well as with Kevin and Michelle. Looking through some of the issues that have been brought up by planning commission members and that we had sort of questions about what was with that best language for members. And we did circulate another revised version of. The design standards as well as some new sections that you hadn't seen before prior to this ordinance. And I'd encourage you to take a look through those and if you, you know, if you get time and you have comments to send me back comments by email. Because we are still discussing at the staff level some various things, I should add some. New comments from Eric today, so I'll be incorporating that and we'll be continuing to make progress on that. And you're trying to ask, you know, whether we should schedule a special meeting for discussion. And I, my inclination is to put that off a little bit as we're still sort of making progress, which we are within. Additional new sections we're kind of closing in, but that. If you see something and you're looking at something, you say, no, this doesn't make sense to me, this doesn't work for me. And now one other thing I wanted to point out that we did circulate was the draft transportation impact study requirement, which we don't currently have, I don't think.
No, it's not rich at all.
Yeah, so sort of drafted something together for that, and I think that is something that some of you may want to review or comment on. Or if you to just.
I was going into that, so I was looking at today, there is, I would have to Google it, that section, that there, in there is the thresholds of when. It's triggered, you have to provide a full, like, engineered impact study. And it's based on the intended use of the property. So, setting that, those numbers, I think would benefit the feedback from all of it.
And, you know, ongoing with the design section, that's everything that's, you know, being of the most interest to the planning commission members. But, and we'll try to, to really work on, work on all these and there aren't that many steps. But this is, that's almost all of it. There's just. Yeah, mobile home parks section, which is required in every municipality by the new status line code. But probably doesn't need a whole lot of discussion and. Which one section? I don't know. We're, we're close to having drafted everything and. So, I guess I would propose that send me comments by email if you have them. And Eric and Kevin and Michelle and I will meet another couple of times and try to, to work through some of the issues or anything that's brought up here and bring you sort of. Just such a final revised drafts for, for discussion. And when we have all that, if there's not time at a meeting to discuss it, maybe we do want a special meeting and say, look, here. We worked through a lot of issues. Here's the full draft. Let's just discuss this.
Kevin or Eric, give me the comments in the sound out you'd like to make?
I don't, the input on the, on the truck impacts probably the biggest, I'm doing it right now. That would benefit the feedback, yeah.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any comments in the sound out you'd like to make?
Nothing for the sound out.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so I would like to move on to public comment and then adjournment. So, I see one member in the public with us at the moment, and if there are any comments about any management for the planning commission from the public? Okay, so with that, we will post comments out, and we'll post the, all I'll say about the infill is. I did know borough council has, has determined that it would like to advertise the ordinance. And I expect that they will formally vote on that at the next meeting. They recommended one change to the infill ordinance, which, which was to reduce the cottage size from 2,000 to 1,800 square feet. Make the discussion about that matter. And so, otherwise, I believe they are prepared to advertise it, so. So, that, hopefully that will move forward. I think that's all there is to report on that. I did provide you all a card copy of the ordinance, so. Live before it gets formed into the actual ordinance language, let me know.
How was that they, did I merge my first one or is that one second?
Let me double check the data. I think there is, yes, there is, because I edited after the council meeting to change the cottage size, so. Yeah, I'll share it with you. Okay, so with that, I will ask motion to adjourn. Okay, two seconds. Okay, on there.
All right.
We returned that, not as previous yet. Thank you.